Good evening, everyone. I'll now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, December the 5th, 2022, and we will begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Pastor James of Mount Zion Baptist Church in District 7. For the last few years, it's been my honor to stop by on Thanksgiving, the weekend before Thanksgiving, when Pastor James and the First Lady and the whole team are leading an effort to distribute hundreds of meals to folks who may not have such a great Thanksgiving. And I was so inspired. This last time I was there, I asked Pastor James to come and do the prayer today. So, thanks again a lot Pastor James, and here he is.
Thank you, Counselor Barth. As we begin to pray, I realize that there are different faith traditions here, and so I've been nurtured in the Christian faith, and so whatever faith tradition you've been nurturing, won't you pray as I pray? Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together this evening and to come and take care of the business of the city. We thank you for health, we thank you for strength, we thank you for just the ability to breathe. I pray, God, that you would bless the families of each one represented here, that you would bless our city, that you would remember our governor and his health needs, and also Counselor Osalee in the needs of his family tonight. We thank you for robust discussion, and ask that you would be in the midst of it, that personal agendas would be set aside, and your will be done for the best of our city. We thank you, pray for all the citizens and all that have roots here and live here and thrive here. Oh God, I pray in the name of Jesus who has nurtured my faith. Amen.
If everyone would join me in doing the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance.
To the law of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. Counselor Ethan Evans, Counselor Brown have asked to be excused for this evening. We have no guests this evening who are already not part of the agenda, so the next item on the agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the Public Assembly Room on Monday, December 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM, the purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, a call is to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, November 18th, 2022. A copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 392, 396, and 406, 2022, said hearing to be held on Monday, December 5th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes. The following ordinances: Fiscal Ordinance 24, Special Ordinance Numbers 15 and 16, General Resolution Numbers 28 through 31, Special Resolution Numbers 28 through 32. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals from November the 7th, 2022. Do I have consent? We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, and special resolutions. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number 458, which honors Thomas Ridley on his 100th birthday.
Yeah, you can hang on right here next to us. Thank you, Mr. President. This is City Council's Special Resolution Number 33, a very special special resolution. A special resolution honoring Thomas Ridley on his 100th birthday. Whereas Thomas Ridley was born on December 9th, 1922, to Thomas Howard Ridley and Evelyn Hazelwood in Indianapolis, Indiana, the six-member family resided at 735 Center Street, a location in one of the communities near Indiana Avenue, which he came to adore. And whereas Mr. Ridley enlisted in the military in 1943 and served across Europe until January of 1946, Mr. Ridley re-enrolled at Crispus Attics upon his return to Indianapolis in 1946 to finish his high school studies, graduating with a class of 1947. And whereas...
Whereas Mr. Ridley, Wade Mary Louise Ridley, who had also grown up close to Indiana Avenue in 1948, after marriage, the Ridleys relocated to the near North Side, where they finally made their home at 3317 Rawson Avenue. And whereas Mr. Ridley spent more than three decades working for the United States Postal Service, eventually moving up to the ranks to assume a managerial position. And whereas the Ridleys had always dreamed of returning to Indiana Avenue, where they had both spent their formative years, they seized the chance in 1996 to return to Ransom Place along with the Ridley sister Nancy Johnson, when the lots on the 800 and 900 block of Pecah Street were made available for purchase. On the land they had all cherries, they bought a corner lot and constructed a brand-new duplex.
Thank you, Mr. President. And whereas Mr. Ridley became regarded as a great historian of the Indiana Avenue area, and when he authored and published his memoir from the avenue at age 90, and whereas Mr. Ridley will turn 100 years old on December 9th, 2022, and jazz music will play down Indiana Avenue in celebration of the occasion, and now therefore...
Be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Thomas Ridley on his 100th birthday. Section 2, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly offers its admiration, congratulations, and the very best wishes to Thomas Ridley upon this momentous occasion. And, Mr. President, I would so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now I'd like for us all to hear a word or two from our soon-to-be centurion.
Thank you very much. I am so proud of the fact that I am able to walk and talk and come down here today. It makes me feel good, and God's been good to me, and I'm still able to move around. I still go around the city doing different things. I don't go out quite as much as I used to. In fact, I get out maybe a couple times a week, but that's enough for me now. I have a lot of good memories of the avenue. I was there during the heyday, when things were really going fast, the '30s and the '40s, '50s, and I knew so many of these jazz musicians. In fact, I have two nephews that are musicians, that one of them now lives in New York. He used to teach music at Rutgers, and he's retired now. And so, I'm very proud of the fact that I have so many memories. I can sit at home, and even though I don't go out as much as I did, I... The memories are good, and that's what I like. I'm very proud of the fact that my daughter is here with me, and she keeps me under control. In fact, they transport me around most of the time at night, because I don't drive at night anymore. So, like I said, I am very happy to be here, and I really appreciate this. And I know Bob Osalee very well, and I knew his mother. I went to school with his mother, and so I have good memories, and I do thank you all for this.
Happy birthday.
This is a council of health, and it's what we all wear from the council. And then you get to take this home.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you, man. Okay.
Okay. Stand here for a second.
Colleagues, it's been an honor to know Mr. Ridley. And as he said, he was my late mother's classmate at Crispus Attics, so I'm incredibly glad to see him so strong and healthy. And, Mr. Ridley, happy birthday. This next item on our agenda is proposal number 350, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 350, 2022, appoints Larry D. Young Jr. to the Early Intervention Planning Council of the Committee... The Committee met on November 16th, 2022, and passed out 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 382, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 382 reappoints Barado Britt to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0, and, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 383, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 383 reappoints Belinda Drake to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. Seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 384, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 384 appoints Jennifer Witt to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 1. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 385, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 385 through 391 together. Thank you. Proposal number 385 reappoints Victoria Betty to the City Market Corporation Board Directors. Proposal number 386 reappoints Greg Henneke to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 387 reappoints Craig Mintz to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 388 reappoints Michael Solari to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 389 reappoints Nora Spitznagel to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 390 reappoints Stacy Earl to the Marion County Animal Services Advisory Board. And proposal number 391 reappoints Daniel Heinz to the Marion County Animal Services Advisory Board. All proposals passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 398, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take 398 and 399 together, please. Thank you. Proposal 398, 2022, reappoints Duane Ingram to the Board of Public Health and Safety. And also proposal 399, reappoints Greg Stowers to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Both proposals were heard on November 16th, 2022, and passed out 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors.
Mr. President, we'll have to at some point revisit 399 in the new year.
You might have a possibility. That's possible. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 401, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 401, 2022, appoints Andrew Harrison to the Juvenile Detention Center Advisory Board. The proposal was held on November 16th, 2022, passed out of committee 11 to 1, with Counselor Ethan Evans with the opposing vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 402, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Mr. President, with consent, I'd like to take 402 and 403 together, please. Thank you. Proposal 402, 2022, reappoints Patrice Abdullah to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. And proposal 403, 2022, reappoints Evan Sheeran to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Both proposals were heard on November 16th, 2022, and both passed out of committee 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 407, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 407 through 409 together. Thank you. Proposal number 407 reappoints Dan Hague to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number 408 reappoints Nicole Martinez-Legrand to the Board of Public Works, but was amended. Proposal number 409 appoints Sebako Jawanza to the Board of Public Works. Proposal number 407 was moved by Counselor Oliver and seconded by Counselor Jones. Proposal number 408 was amended to add Aliyah James instead of Nicole Martinez-Legrand, and was moved by Counselor Gray and seconded by Counselor Jones. And proposal number 409 was moved by Counselor Oliver and seconded by Counselor Jones. All these motions were carried by a vote of 10 to 0, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 422, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 422, 2022, reappoints Dr. Clyde Posey to the General Orders Board. The proposal was heard on November 16th, 2022, and passed out of committee 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. Counselor Carlinho.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we added some stronger comments.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 424, introduced by Counselor Osalee, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcoholic Beverage Board of Marion County. Proposal numbers 425 and 426 referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counselor Adamson. Proposal number 425 approves a declaratory resolution and amends amendments to the redevelopment plan for the Near East Side redevelopment project area of the Metropolitan Development Commission, and establishing a new allocation area in said area designated as the 1331 Washington Allocation Area. Proposal number 426 authorizes the issuance of developer-backed tax increment revenue bonds to TWG Development LLC in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,345,000 for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing the costs of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping a multifamily residential development consisting of approximately 200 new construction, high-quality apartment units with associated parking and amenities, and approximately 3,200 square feet of new retail commercial space known as the 1331 Washington Street Project located at 1331 and 1401 East Washington Street and 23 and 41 South Oriental Street in the new 1331 Washington Allocation Area. Proposal numbers 427 through 430 referred to the Administration and Finance Committee and were referred by Counselor Osalee. Proposal number 427 reappoints Myla Eldridge to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number 428 reappoints Sheriff Kerry Forstl to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number 429 appoints Barbara Lawrence to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number 430 reappoints Terry Morris to the Information Technology Board. Proposal numbers 431 through 441 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were referred by Counselor Lewis. Proposal number 431 reappoints Vincent Ash to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 432 reappoints Mindy Westrick to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 433 reappoints Anthony Bridgeman to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 1. Proposal number 343 reappoints Craig Von Dalen to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 2. Proposal number 3... I'm sorry, 435 reappoints Patrice Duckett to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 2. Proposal number 436 reappoints Roderick Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 3. Proposal number 437 reappoints Brian Barton to the Metropolitan... I'm sorry, the Marion County Property Tax Board Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 438 reappoints Kathy Good to the Marion County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 439 reappoints Susan Williams to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number 440 reappoints Barney Levin Good to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 441 appoints Andrea Neely to the Metro... I'm sorry, the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 442, introduced by Counselor Mascary, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the 2023 budget of the Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement District. Proposal number 443, introduced by Counselor Adamson, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the budget, the 2023 budget of the Woodres Place Economic Improvement District. Proposal numbers 444 and 445 refer to the Parks and Recreation Committee and were referred by Counselor Oliver. Proposal number 444 reappoints Larry Bates to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Proposal number 445 reappoints Joseph Wenz to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Proposal numbers 446 through 454 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were referred by Counselor Robinson. Proposal number 446 reappoints Robert Hammerly to the Marion County Public Defender Board. Proposal number 447 reappoints Sandra Bryan to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal number 448 reappoints David Bowling to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 449 reappoints Ronald Covington to the Police Merit Board. Proposal number 450 reappoints Kelly McBride to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 451 reappoints Kay Sue Leonard to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 452 reappoints Sherri Kiggins to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 453 reappoints Curtis Bigsby to the Emergency Services Agency Board. Proposal number 454 reappoints Fred Purvine to the Emergency Services Agency Board. Proposal numbers 5... I'm sorry, 455 through 457 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 455, introduced by Counselor Osalee, authorizes lane turn restrictions on 23rd and 24th Streets at Delaware Street in District 11. Proposal number 456, introduced by Counselor Oliver, authorizes turn lane restrictions on 32nd and 34th Streets at College Avenue in District 9. Proposal number 457, introduced by Counselor Jones, authorizes residential permit parking at 629 Lexington Avenue in District 16. Proposal number 476, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Alexandra Hall to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 477, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Victoria Handy to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal number 4... Proposal number four seventy-eight introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, reappoints Tanya Ndaye to the City County Audit Committee. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal number four fifty-nine is a loading zone ordinance that was certified to the council for the establishment of a loading zone on the east side of Illinois Street near Washington Street by the Board of Public Works. If no one wishes to stay the effective date of the proposed loading zone, it will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down proposal four fifty-nine for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, proposal four fifty-nine will now pass into law. Proposal numbers four sixty through four seventy-three are all rezonings that were certified to the council for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission in November two thousand twenty-two. If no counselor wishes to call down any of these proposals for reconsideration, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any other proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, proposal numbers four sixty through four seventy-three will now pass into law. Proposal numbers four seventy-four through four seventy-five, two thousand twenty-two, are rezoning ordinances certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission in November two thousand twenty-two. If no counselor wishes to call down either of the proposals for reconsideration, the action of the MDC will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing no one, the proposals will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. And before we open the floor to public comments, I would like to call on General Counsel Kim to review the ground rules for public testimony as adopted by this body. Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we proceed to public comments, we would like to remind council members and the public of a few ground rules. So everyone can have a fair chance to speak and be heard, it is important that we each observe the following rules. First, each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Second, any public comments must reasonably relate to the agenda item under consideration. Third, speakers who stray from the item under consideration or become unduly repetitious may be asked to move on to their next point or conclude their comments. Finally, attendees who cause disruptions that prevent the council from proceeding through tonight's agenda in a reasonably efficient manner will be removed. Please remember that some types of threatening speech or incitement to violence are not protected by the First Amendment at all. We will deal with those issues if they come up, but we don't think they will. And now, Mr. President, if a council member asks for consent to adopt these rules, we can proceed to public comments at the appropriate time.
Very good, thank you. So this next item on our agenda is proposal number three ninety-two, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three ninety-two approves an additional appropriation of eighty-five thousand two hundred and ten dollars, transferring a total of eighty-nine thousand in the two thousand twenty-two budget of the Marion County Recorder's Office for the purposes of financing temporary staffing contractual, contractual costs. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal three ninety-two?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. President. We're talking about the recorder. One of the processes of the recorder's office is to receive deeds for the purpose of recording those deeds. There's a disturbing trend going on in Indianapolis wherein people are finding seniors that may not have the wherewithal to even make it downtown to check on their deeds and so forth. What they're doing is is going in and filing a quit claim, a phony quit claim against these people's property. And then when they get their tax bill, their homestead credit's gone, their sixty-five-year-old credit's gone, all that's wiped out when that property supposedly changes hands through these deceivers who are going to the recorder's office. And the reason why I'm saying this, I just want people out there to be aware of this. There are seniors in this community who are not able to understand everything that's going on with the recorder's office, or their property deeds and so forth. But what's happening is, and I don't want to be repetitious, is people are coming in and filing quit claims against their property. And then the shock that they get when, when they get their tax bills, it may be something to make them commit suicide or do other things, you know? So I'd just like to get that out there. I know the recorder's office is watching this service tonight, and maybe they can take that and have some understanding because last week I had two people in my community who had that problem. The recorder straightened it out, but I'd just like to them to be aware that that's going on. And when they have somebody that comes with that complaint, they will know that they've been already made aware of it through this conversation tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment on proposal three ninety-two? All right, seeing no one, comments from counselors? Seeing none, let us then proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three ninety-six, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Did you say three ninety-six? I'm not the chair of badminton finance.
Proposal three ninety-six approves an appropriation totaling twenty-seven million eight hundred and twelve dollars, eight hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in the two thousand twenty, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two budgets of various city and county departments, agencies, and various funds for the year-end character adjustments funded by the transfer of existing appropriations among characters and funding totaling totaling nineteen million one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, thirty-eight dollars and eight million six hundred and sixteen thousand and five hundred and eighty-two dollars of grants awarded in previous appropriations passed out of committee twelve, zero, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal number three ninety-six?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. As far as I'm concerned, this is the front end of the enslavement that's going on here in this city because all these apartment complexes, you people are out, you see them all over town, they're going up as fast as they can get them up. Well, what's happening is the city is backing all this up with venable bonds. In the case of a default, then that property is liquid, certainly liquidated. So I checked into it last week and found out that the COVID money is being used to lease these properties up. After that happens, then the properties are quickly sold into private ownership and then churned, and that's a real estate churn, flipped from owner to owner, and to the city gets none of their money back that they have appropriated for these bonds. And of course, the city goes into receivership.
Point of order, Mr. President.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, point of order. I'd like to know what this has to do with this proposal.
It has every, well, it just has everything to do with it, Mr. President. I don't want to go any farther, but I'm just concerned about the amount of bond debt that fore exceeds the two percent of this city's allowance for their assessed property. So I don't know what's going on here, but it's really a dangerous path to go down. And I know the state legislature back about five or six years ago did pass legislation that if a chief executives was neglecting his duty in their appropriations body, had overspent on bonds and over appropriated, that a receiver can be appointed by the governor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment on proposal three ninety-six? All right, seeing none, any additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. All right, motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four oh six, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal four oh six, two thousand twenty-two approves additional appropriations and transfers totaling nine million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budgets of various public safety city, public safety city and county departments and agencies, fire general and county general funds for end-of-year adjustments funded by transfers of existing appropriations among characters totaling four hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars and eight million six hundred and forty-two hundred and ten thousand dollars of funds not previously appropriated. Counselor Mascari moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal four oh two, four oh six to the full council, they do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven, zero to one. Counselor Boots abstaining, Mr. President, I so move.
All right, motion's properly moved and seconded, comments from counselors? Counselor Boots.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to repeat, I must recuse myself from this vote today as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal four oh six?
Yes, Mr. President, this is the back end of the proposal that just came before, wherein you have a situation where we're chasing after people who will want to be homeless, who want to be addicted to drugs, who want all those things to happen to them, and they're draining the public safety budget, that's what they're doing. They're draining our budget, just like I said when we introduced the proposal to create the Public Health and Safety Department. And you can't direct people and tell them how to live their lives. If they want to live outside, let them do it. But we, this council, I mean, we're going down the wrong road, I feel like, when we, when we establish, establish systems like this to, to promote alcoholism on one hand, and then come right around on the back end and try to clean it up.
Point of order, Mr. President. None of this has anything to do with proposal four oh six.
And try to clean it up with proposals like this, spending tens of millions of dollars to correct a problem that we're in here tonight, we're actually creating this problem and enslaving more people, that's what we're doing. Thanks, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak to proposal four oh six? All right, seeing no one, additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. There is no business under special orders unfinished business, so we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number three seventy-five, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three seventy-five, two thousand twenty-two approves certain public purpose grants from the Department of Justice for two thousand twenty-two totaling one million thirty thousand six hundred and sixty-six, sixty-seven dollars as part of the Justice Assistance Grants Program, including identified projects and administrative costs. Counselor Evans, Counselor Jared Evans moved, seconded by Counselor Mascari, to send proposal three seventy-five to the full council, they do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven, zero to one. With Counselor Boots abstaining, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three eight zero, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number three eighty and three eighty-one together. Proposal number three eighty approves a declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission removing certain parcels of property from the consolidated Harding Street Allocation Area designating the Coal Motor Allocation Area as a separate allocation area within a consolidated redevelopment area and adopting a supplement to the consolidate, consolidated redevelopment plan. Proposal number three eighty-one authorizes the issuance of an economic development tax increment revenue bonds to eighteen twenty Ventures in a maximum aggregated principle not to exceed fifteen million five hundred thousand for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, and refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping the former arrestee processing center and jail two facility into a mixed-use development, including but not limited to a multifamily development consisting of approximately one hundred and ten to one hundred and eighty new residential units, commercial space for retail and edu, retail and an education center space and performance venue known as the Coal Motor Project located at seven thirty East Washington Street. The proposals passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-two to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three ninety-three, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number ninety-three amends a general resolution number twenty-one, two thousand twenty, to revise the maximum allowable interest rate of redevelopment district bonds. Sarah Reardon, Director of Indianapolis Bond Bank, references City Council General Resolution number twen, twenty-one, two thousand twenty, which passed out of council again in two thousand twenty, with the issuance of up to one hundred and fifty-five million in bonds with a do not exceed twenty-five-year term and a maximum interest rate of five percent. Due to the market change, the bond bank suggested that the maximum, maximum interest rate of five percent be increased to eight percent. The flexibility would aid in making the city more attractable for large development projects such as the convention center and residential development. The proposals passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? Seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three ninety-four, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three ninety-four amends special ordinance number ten to increase the maximum interest rate on proposed economic development tax increment revenue bonds for Monon Thirty-two and Domino Project from six point five percent to eight percent. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? Yes, Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. In committee, I did support this proposal after giving it a lot of thought and talking it over with a lot of folks. I don't think this is one I'm going to support again tonight. Unlike proposal three ninety-three, this is more of a residential development. Three ninety-three is one that we will see economic impacts from, given we don't do the project. This, however, being a residential development, I don't know that I can support this. And with that being said, I will not be supportive of three ninety-four this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, then let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries eighteen to five. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three ninety-seven, referred to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Chairman Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City County Council met on Monday, November twenty-first, to consider proposal three ninety-seven. Before I give you the results of the vote, I do want to read the four sections of this special resolution. Section one, Indianapolis City County Council supports city agencies and departments in their exploration of the research and development of the forest and tree carving credit project and encourage the city to advance this initiative as quickly as feasible. Section two, the council recommends an update and recommendation for next steps of this project within a year of today, including timelines, proposed model, and potential outcomes during meetings of the Environmental Sustainability Committee during the second and fourth quarters of two thousand twenty-three. Section three, the council supports the development of a fund with the ability to direct all generated revenue from the carbon credits project for protecting, maintaining, and increasing urban forests and trees throughout the city. And section four, the council supports the city's continued development of this and other innovative approaches to fund, acquire, and protect urban forests and approaches to fund, acquire, and protect urban forests in Indianapolis. And I'll just note that this special resolution was the outcome of a sequence of hearings, the first hearings that this committee ever had, focused on reviewing the state of green space in Indianapolis and especially exploring the need for continued focus on supporting and acquiring urban forests to preserve them over time, and especially paying attention to creative and innovative new ways to pay for that kind of acquisition. With that, Councillor Potts moved, seconded by Councillor McCormick, to send proposal 397, 2022, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 12 to 1, and ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councillors? Yes, Councillor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification, while we're doing a special resolution in this manner, it seems out of order. I just want to make sure that it's a special resolution and we're not actually creating a fund today.
All right. Chairman, would you like to answer?
Yeah, I asked for this special resolution to go to committee specifically because, for the reason I described earlier, that the committee had spent several months reviewing this issue and exploring it, and this special resolution is the outcome of that. It is not out of order for this process to be followed, and it has happened in the past during this council session and previous ones. I would defer to you, Mr. President, if you'd like Councillor Kim to refer to that, but my understanding is this is a normal process.
Councillor Hart, does that help?
Yeah, Mr. President. By out of order, I meant we do special resolutions at the beginning of the meeting, and this just didn't fall into that category. So it just struck me as, you know, I was reading it as something, as an actual proposal, not a special resolution.
All right, very good. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to go further into explanation on that, I know sometimes when we have resolutions that we've done more research on and we want an airing out of those issues, a lot more detail that we would normally do for a resolution at the beginning of the meeting, we can refer them to committee and have a full-on hearing on the issue, and that's all this has done. And so now it's put into the agenda at that appropriate place instead of the beginning.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councillor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, a couple of points that I want to make sure are understood, that this is another opportunity, one of the few opportunities we have to truly enact part of the Thrive Indianapolis Plan. So I'm excited about the opportunity for the Office of Sustainability to study this worthy initiative. As we all know, we have 214 parks in the city, yet we are one of the lowest per capita spends in the United States. I think there's a lot of room for improvement. We need to increase our tree canopy in this county. We need to protect and preserve it. We need to be better stewards of our parks and urban forests. So I am, again, very supportive of the city's effort to study this, and particularly through creating additional revenue sources through possibly selling credits for the carbon sequestration provided by these trees, and also excited about the opportunity to create a fund, a new revenue source through which we can then even further our interest of preserving and protecting our urban forests. So I believe it's truly an innovative idea worth of exploring, and I support it 100%. Thank you.
Very good. Chairman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had asked to be a co-sponsor on this, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, since my name didn't get added, for also the same reasons I support that Councillor Boots said. Also, it gives us an opportunity to be a legacy for this council for generations to come, is also innovative leader. So many times Indianapolis is lacking, and we trail. This gives us the opportunity to be ahead and be innovative of the game on something and put our footprint without leaving a footprint, if that makes sense to others. Thank you so much.
All right, very good. Councillor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. One, I want to get clarification. I am Jared Evans, and this says Evans. So which one is it? And I was supposed to have been a co-sponsor on this. Mine doesn't. Okay.
If you look on the board, correct.
Okay, I apologize. And, Mr. President, I just want to make one more comment about this, echoing what Chairwoman Jackson, Councillor Boots just said. Taking that one step further, this is a good start. This is something cities have done years ago. And so I think it's important that we keep our eye on the ball on this and continue to move forward in protecting our tree canopy, and that starts with our zoning and some of the things that we're allowing to happen with some of these zoning cases, and probably having a stricter tree, a more strict tree ordinance if we can possibly do that. But I do want to, in all seriousness, push that this is a great start, but we've got some room to go on this.
Very good. Thank you. Additional comments from councillors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 18 to 5. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 410, refer to Public Works Committee. Next item on our agenda is proposal number 410, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 410 authorizes speed limit reductions to 30 miles per hour on Mann Road from Southport Road to Johnson County Line in District 20. Councillor Oliver moves, seconded by Councillor Jones, to send proposal 288 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0, and ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councillors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. There is no business under special service district councils, and there is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. But before we move forward, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our council CFO and Policy Director for his four years of service to the council, Mr. Brandon Hurgett, as he leaves us to join the Department of Public Works as its new director. Mr. Hurgett. All right, the docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councillor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I do that, I just want to say, I think, from all of us councillors here, that our hearts and prayers and thoughts are with you and your family at this time, and hats off to you for being able to come here tonight and be able to conduct this meeting as you have, and thank you for being here. And I'm sure any one of us, anything we can do, we would be very much so glad to help in any way. Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all councillors in memory of Aleah Josephine Kirk Osley, by Councillor Lewis, in memory of Robert Keith Strickland Jr., by Councillor Barth, in memory of Arthur Joseph Tempe Jr., by Councillor Dilk, in memory of Brian Morris, by Councillor Osley, in memory of Loretta Mae Smith, Stephanie Wilson, Betty Berhanen, and Bishop Earl Nellen, by Councillor Osley and Councillor Jared Evans, in memory of Ron Long, by Councillor Jared Evans, in memory of Al Stout, by Councillor Nay Bane, Dilk, Hart, and Murray, in memory of Rexford Carlisle Early. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councillors. I request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of his body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Councillor Murray. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you.